Mr. Beach, do you like to lead us in the pledge? Would you like to lead us in the pledge? Thank you.
Jenny David.
Here.
Roger Mayhew.
Yes.
Charles Wiltie. Brenda Simmons. Craig Scott.
Item two, approval of the agenda. Any additions or corrections? Commissioners?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
A motion from Commissioner Scott, support from Commissioner Wiltie. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item three, declarations of conflicts of interest. Any commissioners?
I have none.
Item four, review of minutes. September twenty-six, twenty-twenty-four, regular meeting minutes.
Read the minutes. I'll make a motion to accept them as presented.
A motion, Commissioner Scott?
I'll support.
Support from Commissioner Wiltie. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Yeah.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item four B, October third, twenty-twenty-four, committee of the whole meeting minutes.
Make a motion to approve the res- resolution for the minutes.
We have a motion with Commissioner Scott. Support from Commissioner Wiltie. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. October four C, October seventeenth, twenty-twenty-four, committee of the whole meeting minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the
Motion, Commissioner Wiltie?
Supporters.
Support from Commissioner Scott. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Item four D, October seventeenth, twenty-twenty-four, closed session meeting minutes. I didn't see those.
You weren't here.
Did everybody else say just where they hear?
Yeah, everybody has them. I just need your two.
I'll make a motion to accept.
Motion, Commissioner Scott?
I'm second. I'll support.
Support Commissioner Mayhew. I should still be able to see those, correct? Okay, I'll look at those later. Any, any, I will later. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Sit that down, would you please?
She's got some.
Item five, public comment and agenda item manners only. Is there any public comment in the room? Any public comment on the phone? Item six, correspondence. We received correspondence from Asaba Valley Community Mental Health Authority related to their meeting minutes and agenda, Northeastern Michigan Community Service Agency related to their meeting minutes and agenda, Washtenaw County Opposition to Livingston County Board of Commissioners' policy to monitor and document contacts between undocumented immigrants in the Livingston County Sheriff's Office and from Westford County related to non-sanctuary county for illegal immigrants. Those have been received in filed consent agenda. I would like to take these individually. Are you guys okay with that?
Yeah.
Item seven A, resolution to approve antivirus renewal. Item seven A, this resolution is sponsored by the information, information technology director Tom Spencer. Ogma County utilizes services provided by an outside vendor for information technology network and individual workstation antivirus coverage. The current agreement for antivirus coverage is scheduled to expire on October thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four. Approval of the resolution will accept the quote from CDWG to provide antivirus coverage for the county information technology network for three years at a total cost not to exceed ten thousand eight hundred sixty-six dollars and eighty-four cents.
I'll make a motion.
Motion, Commissioner Wiltie?
I'll second.
Support from Commissioner Scott. Discussion. Tom, do you have anything to add to this?
No, I'm all set. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Tim, do you have anything on this?
No.
Okay. Roll call vote.
Roger Mayhew.
Yes.
Charles Wiltie.
Yes.
Brenda Simmons.
Yes.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes. Item seven B, resolution to accept an addendum to the stellar inmate voice visitation and email service agreement. This resolution is sponsored by Sheriff Brian Gilbert. Ogma County is responsible for the operation of and supervisory and protective care, custody and control of all buildings, grounds, property and manners connected with its facilities, including the correctional facility. On August tenth, twenty-twenty-three, the Board of Commissioners approved resolution twenty-three dash one zero four to accept a proposal from Stellar Services LLC to provide inmate voice visitation and email services. Considering operational changes implemented at the jail, Stellar Services has proposed a contract addendum for equipment and services. Approval of the resolution will accept additional terms and conditions for services as indicated in the contract addendum.
Motion to approve the resolution.
Motion, Commissioner Scott? Support from Commissioner Wiltie. Discussion?
Yeah, I'd like discussion. I know undersheriff's not here tonight or the sheriff.
Chris is here.
Chris, right, Chris is here.
Aren't you, are you here to represent the sheriffs?
No.
No, not.
Just the ORB?
ORB and R.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
Okay. I know Paul was looking into possibly another option. Have we heard anything on that when it comes to?
I think that other option might have been with the next resolution and not this one. This one is for the phones and that whole visitation thing when we went over there, he showed us where the phones were and the inmates having access and so on. And this is just simply swapping out some equipment because some of the equipment we no longer needed. And this was based strictly commission-based, and so there's not even a dollar amount tied to it. So this is the stellar recognizing there are going to be fewer calls and fewer commission for them, and so some of the equipment didn't need to be there anymore.
Right, because the other one we discussed is that's a thousand dollars a month.
Right.
Commissioners, answer.
I noticed with this, is there an out clause on this? I did not see one. Is there a timeframe?
This was a three-year agreement when it was originally signed, so this
See that here.
Yeah, that's one that was approved last August. That's all you're seeing is the addendum. All the other terms of that other agreement are still in place. I'd have to have that in front of me to tell you what all, what those details would be.
You want me to vote yes on this and you to move that? So.
You know what? I think I could answer your question.
Okay.
Because it was last August. Just bear with me here. Well, what do you know? Okay, give me just a minute. I'll find.
Because this was under a commission thing, wasn't it?
It was, yes.
So, and maybe there wasn't an end to it because it was on a commission thing. I don't know. No, yeah, it's on.
Right. So it's cancellation with ninety days notice?
Okay.
For commissioners information, what I've done is gone back and pulled that old resolution from last year, and I've gotten into the habit of attaching these contracts to it, so I've got it as it was signed. That's, that's it. There's no other tie back to it. So ninety days, and you're correct, it is a commission contract, so this, they were earning based on the number of calls.
It says voice commissions will be adjusted from fifty percent to zero percent.
Right, so there's a fee that's charged to the inmate to use the phone, and we were splitting that commission fifty-fifty, so fifty percent of that would come back to us. And what they're saying with the number of people that we have over there, they can't afford to give up that other fifty, so maybe we just take it all. It's just like a regular phone bill to us now.
Do you recall what that rate was? What, what?
I don't recall what that rate was.
I don't either.
The commission rate?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Last year. I don't remember.
What were we talking about?
I can't.
No, that, that rate study. Another question Commissioner Simmons asked was the duration of the contract. It was a five-year agreement, so this contract could go till twenty-twenty-eight.
Well, I didn't see anything on here. That's why I was I didn't want to sign up.
That's the stuff they have to have for the bond?
No, that's, that's the next resolution. Next resolution that they'll consider.
Are you able to locate quickly? I mean, what, what the commission was last year?
That's not in this contract. I'm just, let me just run through it one more time to make sure that's correct.
That should be in our budget.
There's not a number cited in the contract. I will find out for you and let you know.
Yeah, I would like to know that.
The commission things out now, because a thousand dollars a month, right?
That's the other, the thousand down the month is the other contract, so this one was strictly based on the number of calls, and there's a number of fee for the use of the phones. Deals with the duration of the call and everything else.
Yeah, do you remember that? Yes.
I disagree. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Do we have to have this because we have a jail?
Yeah. We definitely have to have this. Exactly, and they are able to contact their attorneys and others, so yes.
That's me. It's nothing. We gotta have it.
Right.
Yeah, I don't disagree with that. I just would like to know what our commission was last year. I don't, I don't recall. I don't recall that information. Okay, any further questions? I guess let's do a little call on this.
Charles Wiltie.
Yes.
Brenda Simmons.
Yes.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Roger Mayhew.
Yes.
Item seven C, resolution to accept addendum for inmate banking software and commissary agreement. This resolution is this resolution is sponsored by Sheriff Brian Gilbert. On May twenty-first, twenty-eighteen, Ogma County entered into an agreement with Stellar Services LLC to provide inmate banking and commissary services. Considering operational changes implemented at the jail, Stellar Services has proposed a contract addendum for the use of software and equipment associated with inmate banking services. Approval of the resolution will accept additional terms and conditions for services as indicated in the contract addendum at a total annual cost of twelve thousand dollars and establish a fixed rate of fifty dollars per hour for a necessary maintenance services. For any necessary maintenance services. I'm sorry.
I'll move to approve the resolution.
Motion, Commissioner Scott? Is there any support on that?
Yeah.
Support from Commissioner Mayhew. Any further discussion?
Yes, I have some discussion.
Go ahead.
This, and the person who can answer this, maybe here, present. This, this banking for commissary services. The commissary on inmate banking. Do they have inmate banking here? They're not going to keep inmates here. You still need it for, let's say, seventy-two-hour lockup because you take everything away from them. Anybody here that can answer that question?
This is how they bond out.
Okay.
This, this is, this is how they, they transport
Okay, I got it.
Make money go to a bond.
Yeah, I didn't think about that. Thank you.
So that'll be the main thing, but then we could still sell commissary things, but we've got people staying overnight.
Okay.
So comment.
Go ahead.
This is what I asked the undersheriff last week, because he does have other options to look into other entities that would possibly provide the service. This thousand dollars a month, and then the other side of that, I also stated, well, shouldn't the inmate have to pay some of the fees for this? Why are we paying for this?
You asked that in the meeting last week.
Last week, yeah.
I watched that.
But there's no one here tonight to.
Did you guys have a law enforcement meeting before the meeting, before this meeting?
No, before the last meeting.
So I guess, did you get any input? You did not?
I haven't, Tim, you haven't?
I haven't heard.
Commissioner Simmons?
I would think, and the thing here is the banking stuff, you have to take care of the money when you, when they come in. I mean, how long are you going to do it? You're going to have proof. And Commissioner Scott said that's how they bond out and stuff. I would think that, yes, you have to have this.
So how much money? Were you done? I'm sorry.
Yes, go ahead.
So we're, we're agreeing to this contract at twelve thousand dollars. What were we paying? Like, what is, what is the cost difference here?
So as I understand, we weren't paying anything for the equipment for this year.
Okay.
For the service.
That's what I'm asking. I want clarification.
And it had something to do with the commissary, and the stellar is the source for most of what they were selling in the commissary, so I gathering, this is just my opinion. It may not be as accurate as if we'd had the sheriff here to explain it. But when we would buy things to sell at the commissary, there would be obviously a markup that stellar would have, and that's probably how they were getting their payment was through that commissary activity. And their point now is that that activity is no longer there, so they're not getting any revenue from this at all, so that's why we not have the fixed fee.
So we don't know last year how much money they actually received through all of this commission or commissary, or we have no way of knowing that?
Line in the budget that might be able to give us a clue.
I would think so.
Yeah.
Tim's looking for that. Can I?
Go ahead.
So without having the undersheriff or the sheriff here today, and you know, Tom's still gone right now, my question would be is, you know, I mean, currently, operation-wise, is that equipment still there? And can we table this till next week? To find out if there's more information been found from the possible other vendor, or because obviously I understand the bond. I mean, we need to have this. Right? Because stellar came in, Tim, and took most of the stuff out of there, right?
Oh, they did.
This particular machine is still there, and that would is, my understanding is that that would continue just to remain that machine for the bond purposes. There were other things that they did take out because they weren't needed anymore, but that machine, I understand, is still there, and this contract, if approved tonight, will allow them to continue to do the bonding as they've done it in years past. As far as waiting, I don't know if that would be detrimental to the operation. I don't, I don't have an answer to that. That's why it would have been nice to have somebody here from the sheriff's office to help explain.
Where's this twelve thousand dollars coming from?
It'll come right now from the jail budget. We would have to do an amendment someplace, probably create a new line to do this. Last year, we had budgeted just a line, this general line called dispersments, and in the twenty-four budget, we had a hundred twenty-five thousand in that line, and that's the line they would use to get things. Whatever it is that they would sell through the commissary, so yeah, that's a significantly twelve thousand significantly less than what they were collecting prior. Now, of course, we would spend that money, and in commissary, there was a markup the county had too, so we were seeing revenue as well, but just looking at that line, that give us a rough idea.
Go ahead.
But basically, I mean, there is a commissary fund. It's going to be minutes compared to where it was.
Right.
So I mean, you can't compare that to what we used to have.
Right, and the question was, what did they gain last year by through their markups, and that gives us a clue.
That's why we now have a standing bill.
No, that's not reasonably having a standing bill. You can have a standing bill, if somebody told them that we were shutting down and they closed the service.
I know.
Well, I know you know, but that's
I guess how's that different than what she?
Yeah.
Well, we
So Hold on, go ahead.
We haven't found out who gave authority to do that. Nothing had to be said. And we would have been on the same status quo. Now, they might have called us up in a couple of months and say, hey, we're not getting the commissions we're getting now. Well, we've made some changes. But for somebody to call up there and nobody seems to know who got authorization, but somebody called and said, we're done. This is on a couple of different things. Now, now it turned into a twelve thousand dollar cost.
I would have thought that that would be pretty mandatory to report that.
It's the right thing to do.
That's why you're talking about commission, and I mean, that's a hundred and twenty-five thousand is a pretty big number.
Right.
Well, then you'd probably have somebody that would say, I gave authorization, but we've not heard that.
Any further discussion?
So that means no letters in writing or anything?
There was a lot of communication back and forth through all emails over the last couple of weeks related to all of this and just updates, and I think the last email I received from anybody was Monday. I have heard nothing all week. Very odd. It's been very quiet. I just thought maybe I wasn't getting emails. I don't know. I thought.
Yeah, we had really good communication with the undersheriff up to last week, and I stated that in the meeting last week. And that's what we need to have. Got to continue to have that. We have got to be able to communicate. Got to be consistent, so.
And I haven't heard anything from my, since Monday.
Now, these are big questions we have, and there's nobody here to answer them today, so that's frustrating.
I don't perceive where we have a choice. I mean, we, they could have pulled their services all together and said, we're done, and then we're high and dry. I mean, twelve thousand dollars, they're losing a hundred and twenty-five. Paul did state, I watched the meeting, that this was the first time that they've actually came across this. So we have an out ninety days with no no negative impact, correct? If maybe?
That's what you said here, ninety days.
That was for
That was the other contract. I don't know if these contracts were combined or not. This one was originally signed in twenty-eighteen, so I, I don't know. But looking at the formats that we're seeing, I would, would be surprised if it was anything different.
Is our legal team looking at all of these?
They will be before you sign.
Okay. I think that that's very much necessary. Roll call vote on this.
Brenda Simmons.
Yes.
Craig Scott?
Yes.
Jenny David?
Yes.
Roger Mayhew?
Yes.
Charles Wiltie?
Yes.
Item seven D, resolution to approve DHHS fund transfer. This resolution is sponsored by the Ogma County DHHS Board. The fiscal year twenty-twenty-three general fund budget included an allocation to DHHS of five thousand dollars. DHHS requested reallocation of two thousand seven hundred and four dollars and fifty cents in unspent funds to the DHHS Critical Needs Fund. The Critical Needs Fund provides temporary heat and utility assistance for eligible low-income families and individuals in Ogma County when heating or electric services has been or will be disconnected. This request from DHHS is consistent with past practice. This is a good thing, but Commissioner Scott had a lot of questions about this last year.
Make a motion.
Motion, Commissioner Simmons? I support it. Discussion?
I got a discussion.
Go ahead.
I don't have a vote this year.
They do, they do this every year. If there's, if there's funds left over, they transfer it. And that's just normal policy. They go, throw ball away. So so there's nothing here that's unusual at all.
Agreed. Any other discussion? Roll call vote.
Craig Scott?
Yes.
Jenny David?
Yes.
Roger Mayhew?
Yes.
Charles Wiltie?
Yes.
Brenda Simmons?
Yes.
Item seven E, resolution to adopt medical benefits contribution limit per calendar year twenty-twenty-five. This resolution is sponsored by the Healthcare Coalition. The publicly funded health insurance contribution act, PA one-five-two N of two thousand and eleven, sets forth limits on public employer contributions toward a medical benefit plan and any payment for reimbursement of copays, deductibles, or payments into health savings accounts, flexible spending accounts, or similar accounts used for healthcare costs. The proposed resolution imposes the hard caps option, which limits a public employer's total annual healthcare costs for employees based on coverage levels as annually determined by the Michigan Department of Treasury.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
Motion, Commissioner Scott. Support from Commissioner Mayhew. Tim, would you like to explain this?
Every year, you were required as a public employer to adopt a resolution that shows your compliance with PA one-fifty-two. As the chair read, the option that's been chosen here in my history certainly has been the hard cap option. Those are numbers that are established by the state each year, and unfortunately for twenty-twenty-five, the state has chosen sort of inflationary factor of zero point two percent. You heard that right. We don't quite understand how it is they came up with that number. It's extremely low, but it was almost nothing in the end, so it's still a better option for our employees than the eighty-twenty plan for sure, particularly with our Mesa programs. The contract, one contract that we have, I believe it's with the court unit right now, actually says that we will adopt the hard cap. That's been not included in the other four contracts, so that, that helps us somewhat too. For the board's information, as was requested last week, there is a second page to this that shows you what those rates are for twenty-twenty-five. And with the plans that were put together by that healthcare coalition, as you can see, the ABC plans still fall under the hard cap, so employees aren't paying out of pocket for that, those, those health insurances. On the downside, those are the high deductible, high copay plans, but particularly if you're a young, healthy person and you don't have to use your health insurance very much, it's probably a more economical choice anyway. It's still good insurance. It's just your out-of-pocket costs tend to be higher on those. We would still be offering the high-end plans where they still have some contribution from the employee through payroll deductions, so employees who want to opt for those can still do it. But the array of plans that we offer, we believe have set us up as best as we can in terms of that benefit for our employees. Bottom line being, though, you are required by statute to do something with this every year. You do the hard cap, you do the eighty-twenty, are you exempt yourself? I don't recommend exempting yourself because that usually ends up with, at some point, having to come with an explanation of why the eighty-twenty or the hard cap were chosen. And frankly, with hard cap being where it is, despite its minuscule adjustment for this calendar year, it's still the better option, I believe, for employees.
Discussion? Commissioner Simmons, do you have any?
Yeah, I look at these zones. I look at these. So some of these are, are out-of-pocket for two-person and for family.
Unfortunately, the way the state has calculated this, any plan with a two-person is really taking it on the chin on every option. Again, that's one of the variables in this whole statute that makes very little sense. I am hard-pressed to find anybody at the state level who can explain it to me other than to say I'm sorry, but that's what we've always done, so that's, that's what they do. There is a movement among my colleagues to encourage treasury to take a somewhat different approach. We'll see how successful we are in the coming year.
So another question, oh, these pay period rate by weekly, so these take, this money taken out of the paycheck is every paycheck?
Every paycheck, right.
Well, I'm glad I'm old.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Jenny David?
Yes.
Roger Mayhew? Charles Wiltie?
Yes.
Brenda Simmons?
Yes.
Craig Scott?
Yes.
Item seven F, resolution to honor Ogma County Veteran of the Year, Richard A. Ladd. I'm going to request, just let me read this, because she is also a veteran. Please read that aloud.
I don't know if I can read.
You can read.
Okay, this is the resolution to honor Ogma County Veteran of the Year, Richard Allen Ladd. Whereas Richard Allen Ladd has been designated as the Ogma County Veteran of the Year for his exemplary example as a veteran and longtime advocate of veterans' issues, and whereas Richard Allen Ladd honorably for foreign military service in the United States Army, and whereas Richard Allen Ladd has exhibited the highest level of commitment and loyalty to his community and various service organizations as an active member of the Veterans Foreign Wars Post Three-seven-seven-five American Legion Post One-O-three and Disabled American Veterans Chapter Seventy-three. Member of the Ogma County Military Funeral Honors Team, volunteers in conducting fundraisers for various veterans' organizations, Ogma County Veterans Museum, Toys for Tots, and with many other community service activities, and whereas Richard Allen Ladd has been a great friend to his fellow citizens and veterans. Therefore, it be resolved that Ogma County Board of Commissioners declares Saturday, November eleventh, twenty-twenty-four, as Richard Allen Ladd Day throughout Ogma County.
Make a motion to approve that?
I'll make more. Okay.
Commissioner Wiltie? Jeff, do you have anything to add to that?
Yeah, I just realized it's actually Monday. Should be Monday, November eleventh, not Saturday, eleventh, on the resolution. I just caught that error.
Okay, anything else, Jeff?
I'll get a corrected copy to you, and you're all invited. Don't forget, November eleventh, Ford's Conference Center, eleven o'clock.
Eleven eleven.
It's a very nice very nice ceremony to put on. Lunch, right, Jeff?
Yes, ma'am. Lunch, lunch is served. We'll do our ceremony approximately eleven o'clock, between eleven and eleven-thirty, and then we should have lunch about eleven forty-five, twelve o'clock.
Thanks, Jeff. Nothing else to add? Any further discussion, guys? Call in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item seven G, resolution to approve Ogumal Transit Suspension of Saturday Service. This resolution is sponsored by Transit Director Tony Dubay and the Special Transit Advisory Committee. On August sixth, twenty twenty-four, the Ogumal County electorate defeated a proposal to increase the total amount of taxes which may be assessed upon all real and personal property by up to point seven five mil to provide operating funds for countywide public transit service. Beginning in fiscal year twenty twenty-six, millage assessments will no longer be collected to offset the cost of public transit in Ogumal, of public transification in Ogumal County. Approval of the resolution will allow for suspension of Saturday's service at Ogumal Transit to offset the loss of the millage revenue for up to two years, effective upon two weeks public notice.
I'll make the motion.
Motion Commissioner Simmons?
Support.
Support from Commissioner Scott, discussion. Do you guys wanna come on up? Do you wanna give some feedback on this? I would appreciate some. Good evening. Thanks for coming.
This is something that, uh, we discussed last week. At the, uh, this, I mean, the meeting. Long story short, this is just to help us save, uh, but also, uh, to have other funds necessary to help improve the transit over the next two years. Um, biggest takeaway here is, it's, it's a suspended service for up to two years. It's not an indefinite suspension, so uh, we're really just doing this to, again, improve the transit, to save some money. Um, and then hopefully, here in two years, we can get the millage back on for us.
What do your numbers look like on Saturdays?
They're low. They're about forty, fifty riders every Saturday.
And then?
And normally, they're the same, the same group. Going to the woods, going to Walmart. Same group of people. And they go every day, anyway.
The woods, not the forest.
The woods.
Okay.
And they go every day?
Hmm, a lot of these people ride the transit every day.
Okay.
Well, I think it's a, uh, good proactive move. He's gotta be in a savings mode.
You know what this is gonna save? Do you have those numbers?
Yep, um, so, it's an estimate right now, um, an average of two hundred thousand for the next two years.
What's your current fund? Where you guys at? Fund-wise?
Well, Tim, can you help me answer that one? I can't remember off the top of my head.
It was north of a million, but I couldn't tell you off the top of my head how far.
Exactly. I know, it's, it's a little more than that, you know.
And, and remember, when we're talking, because this is a special fund, when we talk about that fund balance, uh, this isn't all liquid, this is also assets that are included in that, so it's not a million dollars, and if we sold everything, okay. Uh, but we're not gonna do that.
Go ahead.
Uh, how many people ride it now? During the week? During the week, well, today's numbers is about a hundred and sixty, I do believe, but yesterday was two hundred one, day before that, two hundred two. So, we, we average about a hundred and seventy riders a week, or a day, every work week.
Daily.
The cost we made last year, or I don't, I don't recall exactly when, we made some cost adjustments. Did that do anything? You know, it was minimal, like, we did that whole, you guys did that whole map thing, just to simplify things?
Um, um, that was just to simplify our fare structure.
Right.
Because we were charging a nickel a mile, a dime a mile, and, um, there hasn't been any complaints from it. Um, it's probably lowered our fare box revenue a little bit because of it.
But the, the fare rates that were put, put in the coffers uh, were a very small percentage of what your expenditures are.
Well, certainly.
Yeah.
I mean, very, very small. I just wanna make, you wouldn't think that we're making millions on these fares, because we definitely are not.
We're, we're not, we're not in the business to make money. It's a service.
Right.
I, I guess this is, uh, this is came from the Transit Committee. This is something that they agree is, is necessary. Am I correct by that, Commissioner Wilson, for the chairperson?
So last Thursday, uh, we had our Transit, um, committee meeting, and there was two members that weren't there. There was myself and two other members that were there, plus Tim. And the two other members that were there were strongly in agreeance with, with temporarily shutting down the Saturday service. I, I had some questions, I've got a few questions answered. You know, my, my biggest thing was, um, Saturday service to some of our residents is extremely important. Um, you know, Ray did say tonight, a lot of these people that are riding on Saturdays are also riding during the week. And I'm gonna trust him on that, and if, and by hearing that, that does make me feel a little bit better about things. Yet also, we, we know fund balance-wise here in the county, you know, there's not many of them that are very plush, so again, like Tim said, it's not a true million dollars just sitting in the bank, so I understand the point of, you know, the financial sustainability aspect of this. We do know for sure that we're six or seven percent less this coming year from the feds, less from the state, we know that's real, so that's less revenue. I'm putting a ton of faith in, in, in Tony, our, our new director. I think Tony's got a great mind on his mind. I think he's got a great direction of where he wants to take this. Um, am I concerned about this? Am I disappointed that we have to, you know, temporary cancel the service? Yes, because there are some residents that it's going to affect negatively. But we have to think about the long term, and we are heading in the right direction. And I would like to see this come back when we have a little more stable ground of the money coming from the feds and the state. And hopefully, in two years, you know, financially, the county's in a lot better position where we're not having to millage everything, and we can get a, a simple millage that can help bring this back. So I've had a lot of time to think about it. I've talked to Tim about it, I've talked to these guys about it, um. For the financial stability of the transit and all the moves we're making, I do support the fact of right now temporarily suspending the Saturday service.
Commissioner Scott, do you have anything?
No, as I said before, I think it's a good proactive move.
Anything, Commissioner Simmons? Commissioner Mahew? I, the millage that didn't, uh, renew, there's one millage that, that goes until when? We have two more years?
It'll be collected in December and that's it.
But there was two, there was two transit millages.
There were, uh, two years ago, we did not renew that point three. And then, uh, this year, the, the second point three millage is the one that we collect in December, and that will be the last, last collection.
And it can't go back on the ballot until twenty twenty-six, so I think it was a smart move. Hate to see it happen, but being a logistician and transporter himself makes beaucoup sense to me. One more comment.
Go ahead.
And we are gonna be able to give a couple weeks' notice, correct?
That's the, one thing I wanted, yeah, in there, is that up to two weeks or, or two weeks, I would like to extend that. Um, if this is approved today, then, um, beginning November first, or honestly, you know, probably tomorrow, we can get them posted up. I can post it on the Facebook and give the community adequate enough notice and time, um, to get other means of transportation for Saturdays moving forward.
I, I, I was shocked when this millage didn't pass. Um, it's a huge service, uh, that a lot of residents used. I think from what the input that I got inside, I got from residents of why it didn't pass was because of this fund balance. Unfortunately, it was misinterpreted, miscued. Um, yes, they heard over the million-dollar fund balance, and like, it was just further explained. Unfortunately, that's not exactly accurate.
Exactly.
Um, and that came from a lot of people. So I, I, I think that millage was originally sold because it was sold that Saturday service was going to be provided.
The, the original, the original millage was with Saturday service, but was originally set up, I don't know how many years ago that was.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Roger Mahew?
No.
Charles Wiltsey?
Yes.
Brenda Simmons?
Yes.
Frank Scott?
Yes.
Jenny David?
No, no. Items, thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Hopefully, we can revisit this. Item seven eight, resolution to approve Register of Deeds Office Job Description. This resolution is sponsored by Register of Deeds Denise Simmons. Job description can help identify particular skills or abilities that are necessary for position or the environmental pressures that apply to the position. A formally adopted job description for the Register of Deeds Clerk slash Document Specialist Position does not currently exist. Approval of the resolution will rest this deficiency.
Move to approve the resolution.
I support.
Motion Commissioner Scott, support from Commissioner Simmons, discussion. Denise, I think, are you on the phone? Have we seen her up there?
I don't see her.
Tim, do you have?
Denise and I went back and forth, um, editing this, and I'm very confident that, um, I can state that this definitely meets with her approval. I mean, all of her suggestions are incorporated in here, does a good job, I think, of addressing exactly what this, uh, position does, so I think it's a very good step forward.
Any further discussion? It's not a new position, it's just, uh, not as impressive, is correct. All fingers, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Uh, where at? Claims, claims, two hundred nine thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars and fifty-two cents.
I reviewed the claim.
Motion? I always mess this part up. Motion for Commissioner Scott? Support?
Oh, yeah.
I support.
Support from Commissioner Simmons. Go ahead, Commissioner Scott, you're the floor.
I, I, there was nothing that was blaring out there, um. Uh, there was some housing costs that raised that number up quite a bit. Uh, and then we got hit with some insurance, uh, insurance costs this month. And, uh, uh, and some legal fees. Some legal fees were up there. You know, so, uh, uh, and I believe that family court had some state bills to pay. So, I will make, make the mo, you need the motion with the number.
We already got, oh, I had to give it all this. Commissioner Scott's, Commissioner Simmons. Commissioner Simmons, do you have anything to add?
Right, I came across one invoice that was, uh, not filled out correctly. It's new business. And, uh, I've already made a phone call on that, and I will give that invoice to the individual, because I took a zero, I just copy of it. Do I think there was anything, um, financially wrong with it? No. But the way it was filled out is kind of a red flag. Um, and I discussed that with Tim today. So, we do need to have that corrected, and how that invoice is filled out. That's the only thing. Do I think it's, he, logically, I think, no. But he does need to. So, if it comes out as a pick, it's one of those random picks that the auditors pick out, and that happens to be one of them, I don't want.
Tim, you're addressing this?
Right, well, Commissioner Simmons brought it in, some very basic information, like an invoice number and the date on the invoice, um. And we had some, um, question about, um, itemization of it. It's, um, things that I think, um, when you work with it day to day, you just take for granted are there. This one just missed it, and as Commissioner Simmons said, it might be a relatively new business, so maybe a learning opportunity there too, uh, but just, it's, it's relatively minor, but something we like to nip in the bud now.
Any further discussion?
No.
When I was first here, I asked, um, after my first, uh, go around with doing claims, I asked for, uh, a brief one, even one sentence explanation on a lot of those bills. But now, after doing it for so much, I'm, I'm already picking up on everything, but there are some other ones, uh. There was, there was a couple of bills there that was extra services by single vendor minds that we got. It'd be nice if, if they explained it a little bit better, you know? Um, I don't wanna say it's just five or six hundred dollars, because five or six hundred dollars is a lot of money, but um, it, it'd be helpful if some department heads or would put in some things.
So this needs to be done on the invoice itself, from the person that's filling it out, to the person that does the service. Cause it didn't have a year on it. Um, I mean, it could have been from nineteen sixteen for all we know. But I know it wasn't, but, so, it, it's, it's a learning thing for the contractor uh, as well. In case uh, this is going out for other things and they're being audited, other, other organizations, they're gonna have to know what the correct dates are, what the invoice numbers are, et cetera, et cetera. So.
Okay, any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Brenda Simmons?
Yes.
Frank Scott?
Yes.
Jenny David?
Yes.
Roger Mahew?
Yes.
Charles Wiltsey?
Yes.
Item eight B, Commissioner Wiltsey, introduction of EMS Director Ray, or, excuse me, Gary Proctor.
Uh, come up here. I'm happy to introduce our new Ogumal County EMS Director, Gary Proctor.
Hi.
Hi, sit down, Gary, and just.
Tell us about yourself.
Yeah, not much to tell. It's a boring story.
We're up for it.
Boring.
Uh, well, I'm thrilled to be here. Um, uh, my background is in the fire service, um, almost forty years. I'm originally from Oakland County, so don't hold that against me, please. Um, but like I said, thrilled to be here, working with, uh, the team that we've got. This is gonna be a great team. I'm really excited about it. Um, so. Married, three grandchildren. They keep me very busy, so.
So the, you've started the new?
Yes, the second week, so.
Okay.
Well, welcome to Ogumal County.
Thank you.
Yeah, is this your first, uh, job? You live here in Ogumal County now?
Uh, I'm renting a place down in Gladwin County, so.
Okay. Do you see yourself moving to Ogumal County?
I think so, but.
That's fair.
That, there, the boss may have something to say about that, something.
I hear ya. All is going well? Yes?
Yes, yeah, we had our EMS meeting last Thursday. And there was a number of team members there for the meeting, which was good to see, and everyone, um, had really good things to say about Gary, and they liked the the first impressions and the way things are, are started there, and, um, Justin, our, our old EMS director, is staying on to help through the transition part-time, which is huge. Um, and we greatly appreciate that, but, you know, Gary's got a lot of years of experience, and always hasn't said much tonight, but he's got a lot of experience, and, uh, we feel he's gonna be a great asset to our, uh, EMS service.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you, all of you too. Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thanks.
Thanks, Gary.
Item eight B, Commissioner Wilt, uh, she's eight C, Vice Chairperson Simmons, ARPA discussion.
Yeah, ARPA discussion, and we talking about, um, um, requests going out for bids for things like lights, windows, boilers, those kinds of things. Um, I would really like to have this ARPA money earmark, earmark for the, earmark for for that, rather than just stuck in a general, general fund someplace and all of a sudden, it's gone. But there is a lot of maintenance stuff that needs to be done to the county building, and I think we need to, um, put that money to use for that. Like I said, for windows, the bathrooms, make them handicap accessible, the front door. Hopefully, we can complete the two front doors, solving that. I think that's money should be used for that rather than putting it in the general fund. Cause putting the general fund, this stuff will never get done.
Where are we with that? I, I know we've had a lot going on, I understand that, a lot of things to work out, but this, again, seems to uh, be less important in the conversation.
We have five RFPs that are just about ready to, to go live. One of them, well, just as Commissioner Simmons had just said, uh, see if I can list them all. We have the uh, secure entryway, uh, entrance into the county building that we were talking about is one, the restroom, uh, ADA compliance. Two, lights, uh, make them energy-efficient lights. Three, windows, same thing, energy-efficient windows is number four. And the fifth one, uh, in, involves the boilers. So the boilers are the first thing I think of. I know that there are more efficient models that are available. Uh, once we get into it, though, we get somebody in here, they might say we need some other things done with the whole HVAC system, which is fine. We'll be open to hearing whatever recommendations come. Those will go out, you will have them, uh, at your, got the date down, on the December fifth, we need a whole meeting. Uh, those, uh, bids will be due and will be in front of you, and that gives us the committee, the whole meeting, and the, the series of meetings in December to go over those and determine which ones are the highest priority for the board. In the meantime, I know that we also have some significant IT costs that we're gonna be looking at over the next three years. We do have a number of workstations that will be obsolete. Uh, I'm surprised that we have, uh, departments that are working on older versions of, uh, like Word software that will need to, to upgrade. But a couple of big things and talking to Tom, we know our servers are, we did our capital improvements plan here a couple of years ago. We identified a couple of servers that are going to be at capacity if they're not already, that will need to be replaced. We also know that we have a major conversion in front of us for BSNA going to a cloud system. All of this is, are eligible as well, so Tom has already taken a running start, I've got a list of things that we need to do. But some costs tied to that, we'll bring that, we've got some other AI policy that we want to talk about at the next committee, the whole meeting. We'll probably have a list for you there. With those six items, I'm pretty confident that the ARPA funds will be pretty well committed at that point. I don't see us having a whole lot left over to work with, but we'll see, we've got to wait for those numbers to come in before we know for sure.
What about. Moving the sheriffs, I'm sorry if that's not being talked about, moving the sheriff's office over to the, because that was briefly discussed, that, that, that could maybe, if there's any funds left over, that that may come from there as well.
It's actually in process and the modifications they need are, are not very expensive. We've got a partition wall that they want to put in, a couple of outlets that they want to move, but nothing that has a very, very high dollar attached to it.
Got to add to that.
Go ahead.
Brian Stein is going to get some estimates for that wall. It's basically just a wall being moved, we're going to have some drywall, some paint, a little bit of flooring, kind of like Tim said, a little bit of electrical to do there, so. And clean the carpets, so. There isn't going to be a huge, huge expense there, but we want to keep moving on this because the plan is to have the sheriff's department move there fully operational by the end of November. Period, not past that, right? I mean, we're sticking very.
Yes, we, we want to winterize the building they're in right now and realize the savings from, you know, not having water in there and heating that building.
Well, I, I know that these items that we just listed are gonna, are gonna cost money, but. They're all gonna save us money, so the, the, we need to continue to move forward with this.
And keeping in mind with the boilers, the lights and the windows, there are rebates through Consumers Energy, you might recall when they were here a few months ago. Talking to us, so yeah, they'll not only be the savings, but there'll be that upfront rebate that we'll realize as well.
Thank you.
Can I?
Go ahead.
Question. So, we know that the tax revolving fund for the county went flush. Used for, should be used for capital improvements for the county. Karen, I know we talked about this last week or a couple of weeks ago. Roughly, what's the current balance for the tax revolving fund? And then the second question would be is, what would you feel we could comfortably use for the capital improvements? For the county?
I don't have those figures exactly with me today, but approximately five million in your tax revolving fund. And I would not spend anything more than three million is what I need for the tax settlement process in the spring. So, you have about a two million dollar window?
Which is not a lot.
It's not a lot.
But.
So I guess what I'd be thinking about too without taking the money out of there. Because Karen's going to have an obligation, that's not this year, but the following year too. And that tax revolving fund doesn't build up like it, like it used to build up, so. Maybe we should just leave that alone. And not utilize it because I'd hate to be short, then we have to take out a loan if we could even get one.
Right, well, I mean, Karen will tell us that number and, you know, we wouldn't want to get close to that, but there's substantial amount of money that can be used for capital improvements. And still keep us a good safety number in there that Karen would feel comfortable with.
I know Karen can't tell us right now, but it'd be nice to know in the future is what you think that nice company number would be. Natasha Revolvin, I don't, I don't want to get her short.
I'll have exact numbers for you at the budget meeting tomorrow morning.
Yeah, oh.
So you, you're. The, it's December fifth, we will have the RFPs.
Right, the RFPs will actually do, be due before then, they'll be due in November, so, but yeah, we open them here, so.
Anything else, Commissioner Simmons, this was your.
No, but I just, I just didn't, because I know it, it has to be earmarked or obligated, whatever you want to call it, by December thirty first. And it has to be spent by the end of twenty-six, is that correct?
Right.
So, I want to make sure that. We do something now. So this doesn't just slip by us and oh my goodness, December, September thirty first, what are we going to do now?
Perfect, thank you. Unfinished business, any commissioners?
No, we're good.
Go ahead.
So this is the voting week. So, you want to put this on, you got the RFPs anyways, they're going to go out, right?
Right, you won't be able to really vote on the projects until December.
December fifth.
This is, this is quite a shopping list, I don't think you're going to have any problem.
I know, I did, but I'd like to have a motion, a resolution. That the ARPA money be spent on things like this versus just put it back in the general fund.
Question.
Yeah.
When you, so what I'm taking from this is, you want to try to ear note this money, so. We shouldn't really do what truly needs to be done with this county and use money to get our negative cash taken care of?
I didn't say that, you don't think this needs to be done?
Reading between the lines.
Well, reading between the lines incorrectly. Because that can be changed, if we have a fund balance this year and a fund balance next year, then that negative fund balance should eventually go away.
We have voted on that numerous times, so yes, we have, I don't feel like that was the road she was going down, she just wants to make sure that we're moving forward with this project.
Right, that's correct.
Okay, item nine, unfinished business, are there any commissioners? Item ten, Administrator slash Controller's report.
We have a report in the folder, a couple of other things. Earlier this afternoon, I was able to participate in a team meeting with our district court administrator and approbate court administrator with. Name you may be familiar with, a couple of you, Rod Taylor, he's now with Maynard Castarian. Their firm was retained by the state Supreme Court to start gathering data on court costs. And I want to point this to you because I think it's a very positive step. What the state court administrator's office is doing is asking Maynard to collect fiscal data and procedures from all our counties. And to come up with a formula that would actually create a new model for funding the courts. What I'm hoping for is that we end up with a model that the state ends up taking care of all the funding for the courts. Takes care of all the labor issues with the courts, like union negotiation, setting salaries. And pays for all of that and takes the county out of the equation. Now, I don't know exactly, you know, what that's going to look like coming out the other end, I can't imagine the state just saying, well, counties. You're no longer obligated to fund this very large part of your budget each year. So there'll probably be some other caveats, but when we do fund the courts, keep in mind though too, that a lot of that money comes directly from the state. So this is a good step because now we're at least talking about it. There was a commission that was put together back in, I believe it was twenty eighteen, that came up with a, a new way, a new model to fund the courts. I'm glad to see that they're finally taking the step forward, so this is the very early step. They wanted to talk to us because we are. Within a group of counties that they felt would be a good representative sample, we are multi-county district and circuit court. We have a population in the twenty thousand range, which is true of a lot of counties, they felt we were a good starting point to talk to. There were some things that we learned today, or at least I learned that we do with our courts that are very unique. But I'm also learning that probably we're unique and about sixty other unique systems are going on across the state too. So Maynard has their work cut out for them, but it's just very positive that they finally have started down that path. And hopefully within a few years, we'll have that new model. This all stems from what you might recall as the Cunningham case, and this is a case that's several years old now. It was actually out of Alpine County. There was a concern that the courts were being asked to set funds or to set fees to provide revenue for the court. For the court's operation and that's not what the court felt was a very just way to establish fees. On people who are sentenced in court, so. Supreme Court has said state come up with another formula. We've been, we've had that deadline kicked down the road, I believe three times now, and I think it's twenty twenty-six is now the deadline. For a new form, a new model to be put into place. If not, we do risk, or the state in this case risks, the higher of the state Supreme Court just saying, well, from now on, you can't assess those fees. And if that happens, we're stuck holding the bag literally, so hopefully this will get us to where we need to be by twenty twenty-six. Again, this is just the start, I was kind of thrilled to be able to participate at this very early stage and now we'll just see how things unfold. Rod Taylor, incidentally, was at Department of Treasury for a number of years in the local government division, so. By choosing his firm, I think they've already got a good running start at this, he already understands these structures and how they work. So I think it gives us a, a much better chance of getting a good workable product when they're finished. Second thing is more in line of a question for the board, you might recall a year ago, roughly a year ago now, we had our last kids' day. Where we had the sixth graders, I think it was Littlemore Prescott that were in here, they shadowed a number of us for the morning. What they would like to do is continue that at some point in November, but in order to do that, we would have to move one of the November meetings to a morning. So the kids could be here to do that. And the question for you is, are you willing to move one of those dates? We're at November seventh, fourteenth, twenty-first and twenty-sixth. We would normally meet the twenty-eighth, but that's Thanksgiving, so we get the Tuesday on that week. So is that something you'd want to do? And if yes, I will let organizers know that and we'll get it scheduled.
I think, I think it's a great thing, I think absolutely. I think the, the elected officials and, and all the commissioners have really enjoyed that in the past.
I, I think the, the students enjoyed it too.
Did you guys?
I think it needs to be a regular meeting.
I agree.
Voting happens, otherwise they're not getting the whole.
I agree with that. Yeah, I agree, I think it's important.
So the meeting dates are?
For a regular meeting, it would be the fourteenth or the twenty-sixth.
I know for me, the twenty-sixth would work a lot better.
That's MTA night.
Tuesday?
The twenty-sixth is MTA.
We're doing it in the morning.
I know, I'm saying.
She's saying, if you have a morning meeting, then everybody.
So you guys agree the twenty-sixth morning, because we don't have time to change.
What time we come here?
We've done those at nine o'clock, in fact, last year, I think we were at eight o'clock when we met.
Yeah, but students have to get to school and get here.
What's with nine AM meeting? You guys are sharing that?
Yep.
Okay, perfect.
Where's the MTA meeting? West Rain, town through, okay.
Anything else, Tim? Any questions for Tim? Elected officials and department heads, clerk.
Brett Gilner, you're Oldham County Clerk. Couple of things, just want to report that early voting starts this Saturday. October twenty-sixth through Sunday, November third, eight thirty to four thirty every day in the county building. In the commissioners' chambers. I am excited, a little nervous. Our office has been getting blown away with phone calls and people coming in, asking questions. Wanting to know when it starts, so. I think it's going to be a really, really big turnout. It's the November election, so that's going to be a bigger turnout anyways, but just getting. A little bit of feedback from the local clerks, their absentee. Ballot applications or requests for absentees, some of them have almost doubled. Which some of those numbers are like more than a hundred. Requesting absentee ballots and to register to vote, so super excited about that just because. Elections are. The majority and were a big part of my function. And I have worked my butt off and my staff has worked their butts off and to. See it all play out, I'm just excited for it. So that starts this Saturday. And then the other thing. I'm just going to say this, because I am a stakeholder in Oldham County, in the county building, the business. As an elected official. I agree that the building does need to be worked on. But as somebody who is in control of my budget, I would rather see money go towards the negative cash, like Commissioner Wiltie is saying. Get that fixed, I'm committed to making sure that my office doesn't go over budget, doesn't. Doesn't do what previous administrations have done to put us in this position. So, I guess I'm just requesting that. You guys listen to your voters, not just what your opinion is.
What do you mean? We do listen to our voters.
That was a rough statement to make. It was a very rough statement to make.
It's my opinion and I'm speaking.
Listen to our voters.
Who's got the floor?
Sorry, I do.
Anything else?
That's it.
Treasurer, do you have any? Go ahead.
That was October twenty-sixth to November third.
Correct.
And that's. Eight to four thirty?
Thirty to four thirty.
Brett, when, when can they, when do they start putting the absentee ballots through the tabulators?
They can start first thing as soon as the polls open, election day. We don't have absentee counting boards, so. They can't start tabulating them until seven AM when the polls open. Most of them don't start that early, they'll start usually. Usually right away in the, you know, seven AM, there's a big rush, people going to work, teachers, et cetera. Once they get their first little lull, then they'll start. Okay. But the different, I mean, with the passing of the proposal now, if you have an absentee ballot and you don't want to turn it in to. The Dropbox, you can actually come in election day and run it through the tabulator yourself.
Really?
Yep, or you can bring it into early voting, we actually had, I think we only had two in August do that. But yeah, we have in the poll book, the computer. There's different buttons that. We would select voter brought in or, I can't remember exactly what it's labeled, but. It transitions it from a absentee ballot, which people typically think of an absentee ballot, sending it in the mail or whatever. It transitions it from a. The process of absentee to. Yourself.
Thank you. No, anything else?
Nope, that's it.
I, I would like to respond to that by a statement. I work very, very, very hard, every vote that we make, to not make this personal. I speak for a few different townships. Every meeting that I go to, I give residents opportunities to ask questions and to speak. So I want to make that very clear, every time that I vote. I vote for my voters, I try very hard to keep personal opinions. Out of the scenario or the situation. So, Treasurer.
Financial reports are on your iPads, I just want to bring to your attention that those reports will be unofficial until the audit is complete because it is year end. I attended an economic market outlook Zoom meeting this week, just keeping my eye close on the market with the decline in interest rates. That we're heading into. I will be attending the EDC Economic Outlook Conference next week, there's an invitation that came out, I don't know if you're all aware of that, but. I'll be attending that next week, I have an RFP issued for the land bank for a phase one study to be done on our property at two fifteen Washington Street. So that we can keep moving forward with our land bank projects and to let you know that the audit is scheduled to begin on December second. That's all I have for tonight.
Do you want the floor next? Come on up. Very cautious, I didn't call you Mr. Reader. Go ahead.
Well. I apologize, I didn't get the ORV. And in on time to get it in. Agenda, but y'all have copies of it.
Yeah.
That provided. And then the Marine is also already in the agenda.
Is the, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Is the Marine coming to an end?
Marine is done, Marine is done, Labor Day weekend, ORV is done, the end of October. Yeah, basically that first month, hope that it's done.
Looks like you guys had a busy season.
We were very busy, we put a lot of, a lot of hours in. We had just like four hundred and. Over four hundred hours in for ORV. And four hundred and forty-two hours in on Marine. Yeah, the guys are really busy. A lot of contacts were made, a lot of. Like a publicity. Like a publicity was gained with the people that they come in contact with.
Money was spent?
Money is spent. We did really well on that. Um, we had our marine grant was sixty-seven hundred. We spent all that. Um, and then our, uh, ORV grant was twelve thousand and we spent eleven thousand, eight hundred and thirty dollars and. Eighty-eight cents. So just under, so we didn't really go over on any of that stuff, so.
Anything new to report?
Anything new? Well, yeah. We got all kinds of new stuff now. Um, we partnered with St. Helmut Powersports last year on, um. Yamaha Corporation came out with a low law loan program. Side by sides. We got one of them last year from Yamaha. Free use, got to use it for a year. Uh, didn't cost anybody any money. Yeah, we got to use it for a year, but almost thousands of miles on it.
Wow.
On the trails, which kept the miles off the one that the county owns. Um, so hopefully that'll last a lot longer. Um, next year, we've already been awarded two from Yamaha. So that'll even help even greater. So hats off to St. Helmut Powersports for helping us obtain all of that.
Absolutely.
Um, cause anytime we can save money by getting stuff like that, that's, that's huge, especially when we're all grant funded.
So and for you for putting the effort and time into these grants, you, you've done very well at receiving them and applying for them and.
Well, that's, that's the way things get done.
Did you have enough help? Or was that on?
There, there is, I mean, we did good. Um, you know, obviously it would have been nice to have a couple more guys always, um. But the guys that we have, um, they, they stepped up. And, you know, for them to work their normal jobs, Monday through Friday, and then give all their time on the weekends to do this, um, I, I can't thank them enough. That, that's huge. Um, I can't do it by myself, nor do I want to, so.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm very happy with how everything turned out and.
What do we got for marine equipment right now?
Uh, we have two boats and two jet skis.
Okay, still got the jet skis.
Yeah.
Didn't we have more? We had.
Well, technically, yes, we have. Well, we still have the two old jet skis.
Are they ready to go?
Yep.
I mean, are they ready to leave or?
Yeah, they are. Um, and the year is up on the ones that we are using, um, so those actually go on to the county now.
Okay.
Um, because we have, that's part of the government program that you have to keep per year. Which is up to June, so I applied and got. They sent us the stuff to get entitled to the counties, so.
So should we sell the old ones?
We can.
Well, I mean, if we're not using them or?
That's, that's, yeah, that's totally a prediction.
Well, I mean, I'm just asking, if you're not using them.
If, correct, you know, there are, yes, there are a couple pieces of equipment that we are no longer utilizing. Um, that, that could be sold.
Yeah.
I don't know how much they would be worth.
Yeah.
But I can't, so I can't give you a dollar figure, but.
Like those give you a life reserve.
I mean, we, you know, well, last year we got the grant for the snowmobile trailer.
Right.
So we have one trailer that's not being utilized now that could be sold, I guess.
Oh.
Um, that place.
Well, we need now a snow.
We're gonna have snow this year.
That's what they say.
Um. We did get the snowmobile grant, speaking of, for this year.
Good.
I don't, did Under Sheriff get that to you yet? Okay.
Yeah, I've got it.
Yep.
Uh, we did get our grants, the same as last year, it's four thousand.
Okay.
Um, which last year we didn't use, obviously, uh, which the state didn't penalize us for not. Because most counties didn't utilize most of their grant for the year, just because of the weather.
Yeah.
So they were nice enough to give us that money again this year without docking us. And so hopefully we'll be able to, to use that all up this year.
Great.
Thank you. I have a question.
Go ahead.
Yeah.
Good to see you. Thanks for being here. Appreciate what you do. Um, probably about two months ago, a law enforcement meeting, I asked the sheriff and under sheriff. For a breakdown on our marine patrol. I mean, we, we have a, a number of lakes throughout the county.
Yep, we have nineteen that we work.
Nineteen that we work.
Yep.
And I asked for a breakdown because I had a few, uh, residents, especially in Mills Township, that asked me, they had some concerns. That the majority of our time was going to Lake Ogumah. I, I can't answer that because I still haven't got that information.
Right.
Is that something that you could get to us? Uh, do you, you have that data from this past season? How many hours patrolled on Lake Ogumah, Sage Lake, Rifle Lake, George Lake, over here?
It should be in your, on your iPad. Uh, if you click on the, the marine. On the very bottom page, should have the breakdown for each individual lake.
Each lake?
Yep.
Yeah, it does.
I'm sorry.
Page, it does, page five.
Yep.
Great.
So that's, that's, so there's your.
Thank you.
Uh, on top of, and that doesn't include, obviously, Lake Ogumah, because that's a contract.
We bill them.
We, we bill them. Yeah, and then, and the bill is actually, I think is in there as well. Um, what, what they were billed and for how many hours and, I mean, we have to be billing for the extra gas.
Well, I appreciate that being on there. Thank you.
We charge them mileage for the car to go from here to there and back. Um, so there's. That's another thing that. Here, probably in the spring, just so everybody has it on their radar, that contract is expired with them. They would like to renew it, but we'll have to, at that point, most of their people that are on their board are gone to Florida already. So in the spring, we'll have to get with them, as long as you guys want to continue that program or that contract, and we'll get another contractor on out. Is that how that works then?
No question.
Right.
Go ahead.
I have one question. When, when you contract with Lake Ogumah, um, what are the charges? Are they just for the gas there and back?
Whatever, yeah, I think this year was what, sixty-seven cents a mile, wherever the state contracted, whatever the state rate is.
So they're not, they don't pay for, yeah, where's the person's patrolling out there?
Oh, absolutely, yes. That's on top of.
Oh, I'm just asking, you didn't, you didn't say.
When they originally did that contract, it was a hundred and forty dollars per day. And what that covered was eight hours of the shift for the employee. And then gas and then the use of the boat. Plus they've also put money towards the purchase of one boat.
Okay.
Um, but.
How much is that? Was that a hundred and forty you said?
A hundred and forty a year, or a days, excuse me.
Okay.
Yeah. And then when, but back when that contract was drawn up, gas was only two bucks a gallon.
I understand.
When it shot up to six bucks a gallon, we said, we can't do that. You know, that, because then it would be weird. So at that time, they, they opted to pay for the extra surcharge for the fuel on top of whatever it normally would have been at that time. And I just add, add that extra on there.
Thank you.
To subsidize that.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other elected officials or department heads? Missing anybody in the, come on out, sir?
Back.
So it should be in yours tablets. Um, so this is my first, uh, department head report, so there's. Try to break it down and make it as simple as possible. Um, so starting off with facilities. Um, super excited about this one. Our MDOT approved a third-party contract for a grant to replace our asphalt. Um, meaning we have the go-ahead to, to start. So we're expecting November fourth, uh, for, um. Hodgins to come by and start ripping up and replacing our, our asphalt. So super excited about that. Um, the RFPs for overhead and, uh, and entry doors were issue, were reissued this month, so we should hear back as well. Um, and then we also purchased ten garage door openers for our drivers. They're super relieved they can finally pull up and click the button, pull in, so. Um, for our vehicles, we had a four-H wrap completed on bus sixteen. I don't know if you guys seen that around yet. So that was pretty cool. Uh, we also have two new transit buses. The first one will be received back in September. That one's already on the road. Um, but our newest one is a nineteen plus one, requires an S and P endorsement. Um, so we're working, we're, we're waiting on the antenna, new radio to be installed along with our decal as well. Um, on top of those two new buses, we decommissioned two, or we have one decommissioned and one is slated to be decommissioned. Um, to replace them along with receiving sixty new tires for the transit facility and the buses. Um, next for personnel, we, uh, we hired two new part-time employees. One is a driver. And the other one is a driver dispatcher, uh, with the intent of him getting his S endorsement, hopefully by the first. So that'll be a great addition to our facility. Um, and then the one thing I wanted to talk to you guys about, or just let you guys know, uh, we're in the process right now of drafting and completing a, um. A full-time mechanic position, uh, job posting. Uh, our current mechanic is thinking about retiring next year. So I just wanted to bring it to your guys' attention that that is a possibility, uh, and that is something we are working on right now. Um, lastly, for finances, we had a deer accident on, uh, October eighth. Deer ran into the side of one of our buses. Uh, it's over at Laners right now. We're looking at a five thousand dollar deductible for that under repair the bus. And then, um, Ray and I are currently, um, preparing for our local bus operating report to MDOT along with our reconciliation report to MDOT two.
Are you guys fully, where are you at as far as staffing?
Right now, we, so we've dropped one, um, for reasons. And then now we're at nineteen, twenty, including, oh, sorry, nineteen, including Ray himself.
So do you have any positions posted currently?
No, not right now.
Good.
Can I add to Tony's?
Go ahead.
Thanks, Tony, for the report. Uh, just so you know, we are really excited that the asphalt is going to get done this fall. It is really bad out there. So damaging not only our buses, our team members' cars, so that is a plus and that is paid for, uh, through grant funding.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you have something? I'm sorry.
Yeah, um. It's court policy, you know, you wouldn't be aware of this, but it's court policy, if you want to replace a. Somebody needs to be replaced or a new hire brought in that can have to come to the board just for our blessing.
Right. That's why I just wanted to bring your attention now. And then, um, right now, myself and along with Tim, we're creating a posting, so.
Any meeting will do it, so.
All right.
Thank you, sir. Just Bray slowing down?
Bray is slowing down.
He's slowing down.
He's been slowed down.
Made to the back room. Got up.
Any other elected officials, department heads? I don't think any in the room. Any on the phone that want to report? Matters on the floor?
None.
Motion for adoption?
None.
Commissioners reports, Commissioner Simmons?
I have nothing.
Mr. Mayhem?
Nothing.
Commissioner Scott?
Uh, airport meeting was a couple of weeks ago, I guess. Um, we put bids out for the pulverized asphalt that came off the old airstrip. When was able to sell that. Um, we're, we're taking a look at the sand. We have a lot of sand out there and we've had some requests. From some of the local farmers about sand, so we're, we're gonna put together an RFP or a, or bid, bid package for that. Um, the runway is just perfect. Uh, it's just really great job. Uh, hit Ogumah Township meeting, um. They had, we have, it's my, the township I live in, we have four, four members of our township board are retiring. So we're gonna have a big change there. And, uh, so had a dinner, an exit dinner, I guess you'd call it. So, um, City of West Branch was a couple of weeks ago, uh, nothing that jumped out there. Um. I, I missed the last, uh, road convention meeting. But, uh, yeah, that's what I got.
Commissioner Wiltsey?
Uh, this past Monday morning, uh, via Zoom, I attended the Northern Michigan Commissioners Association meeting. That are held up in Roscommon County, um, Rich Castle with Consumers was there giving us a report on the dams. Um, Consumers still trying to figure out what's going to be the best avenue to go at that. They are taking bids on the dams, you know, throughout the five, six county area around us. Um, actually is a pretty big deal because obviously if these dams would be sold, you need to make sure that the people that own them. Can manage them properly, or that could cause some serious problems for our area. So it is a pretty big issue. They're gonna continue to keep us updated, uh, where that goes. Uh, another, the septic code, I talked to you guys about five, six months ago. There's still a bunch of state legislators that feel that Michigan needs to have a septic code. Um, this could get really interesting if that's something that will, would happen. I know there's a lot of people fighting against it. Uh, there's a lot of back and forth right now, so. Uh, but as I get more information on that, I will let you guys know, because that would affect a lot of people here in Ogumah County. And that could cost substantial amount of money. Um, EDC, as Karen brought up, uh, next Wednesday morning, we got the economic outlook, uh, breakfast. Um, also with EDC, uh, yeah, I'm a board member. You know, there's a lot of people, again, that don't realize the, the benefits of having, uh, you know, an economic development corporation in your county. They don't take the time to do it, or they're overwhelmed by thinking it's just for big business. Again, we're here to support anybody. I mean, somebody that wants to start a simple startup business, the EDC is there for them. We've got some very strong people there. Penny, who runs it, our president, have a really strong board. So I try to really educate everyone that if you know someone or yourselves are interested in starting a business, we're here to support you guys. Um, another thing that we're bringing to the table, and it's, it's a big issue in the county, we still have a lot of residents that don't have access to high-speed internet. So, so at the EDC, we want to be able to continue to be an asset for the county. And we realized that starting a broadband committee to try to work, um. With some of the stakeholders in the county and try to figure out how we can get broadband to some areas of the county that need it. I think that's very important. Um, I had signed up to be on that committee. And, uh, I think we could bring some big things to the area with that. It's gonna take a little bit of time, but we definitely know there's some areas in the county that still simply do not have high-speed internet. And, uh, we want to try to, to get those areas reached and we're gonna start working on that. So as we build that, I'll keep you guys briefed. Um, I would like to introduce our soon-to-be-after November fifth, uh, Mills Township Supervisor is here tonight. Bruce Beach. Bruce, thank you for being here. I know you're spending a lot of time to educate yourself and get involved. And I know for Mills Township, I'm really looking forward to working with you. So, thank you. Um, and Housing Committee, we had a meeting last Tuesday. Um, as I've told you guys before, been pretty consistent, you know, we have been spinning our wheels. Um, we, we do feel like we're gaining some, some traction. And we are excited that, uh, we're gonna start working on a meet and greet for the beginning of, uh, like two thousand and twenty-five. And I'll keep you guys informed on that. Um, basically bringing, uh, developers and builders. And, uh, stakeholders all together at one area to try to, uh. Expand what we're trying to get going here with, uh, affordable housing, so. That's all I have.
I was on vacation, so I have nothing, but I, I have received, uh, two text messages already since this short time. Related to the transit, just to clarify, just so that it's out there. It's related to the millage. The millage expires, the millage that was voted with the Saturday service expires when?
I'm not sure which one of those two millages that was. It might already have been expired. Ray has left.
I, I agree with you.
Our equalization report.
Now, but we'd have to look at the actual language, the language of one of them talk, I think.
Both of them as of December thirty-first or, or.
There's, there's one more assessment and then that's it.
Be on the taxes this December.
This December.
It will be, it will be.
And that's it. There will be no more.
Hey, I, because we're, I've already received two texts, so I'm sure come our next week, our, uh, first week is typically when I have. Majority of my township meetings, I'm going to be asked and I want to make sure that the correct information is given. Okay, yes, Commissioner Simmons?
You have a couple of comments here. Um, in Mills Township, I've already contacted the Mills supervisor right now, not Mills, um, Edwards. You did my brain here. Don't they have a, a tower that's going out there?
Uh, we got a cell tower going up on Green Road. We are still, um, in the process of approving upward nine. Um, Pyramid is the company putting the tower up. And right now, next hour, next hour, Horizon's the only carrier on it. Um, that's probably gonna change. And Chris Grobel from MHD was then facilitating between us and that power tower.
Yeah.
Uh, we have our public meeting scheduled for, I think it's November eleventh, um, prior to our regular board meeting.
So there is, there is, um. So there'd be cell service that'll be available that way. It looks like if it goes through.
Well, and it should, you know, I, uh, received a phone call. Well, and it should, you know, I received a phone call from Clement. They said when our tower went up, they had really good service and then. No service. I don't know if towers can move or satellites, that's beyond me, but. You know, Pyramid just puts them up and now the one they're putting up on Wengeley's property is what they call a breakaway tower. So if it starts to lean or to, it'll break in on itself versus falling all the way over. So that minimizes damage to other properties. That's the new state of what they're planning on doing everywhere.
That will help out a lot.
Commissioner Simmons, you have something else?
Yes, I do have a thing. About the septic code, what they're thinking about right now is that every five years, they want every septic tank in. In in our area, in our district health department too, they want them all inspected. And or if you sell them, you sell your house, it has to be inspected. And the the finances on the property owner that you have to dig it up so they can come and inspect it. And that's what it is right now. That's what I don't like. Yes, go ahead.
And an additional three thousand dollars per septic tank. Three thousand dollar fixed costs.
Financial doesn't need to be fixed.
No, fixing costs, if you have a septic tank, three thousand dollars.
And if the people don't get the money, then what?
I don't agree with this. This is just another.
No, I don't agree with it either. I I heard the same thing, you know, and all these inspections are going to be at the. Price of the property owners and if that's the case, I didn't, I didn't hear three thousand dollars, but I knew it was going to be expensive. So thank you everybody. Now the downside of that is they don't have enough inspectors to do that. Not even close. We probably have to make her everybody in Ogumon County to be an inspector, I think.
And anything else, Commissioner Simmons?
No, that's, that's all I know.
One more comment, if I may. Something's just come to mind. I I heard you. When we were talking back negative cash here a few minutes ago. About having a fund balance and then tapping off the fund balance to pay the bills. A fun, in order to get the fund balance that we've really got to have, is going to take years to get.
Okay.
If we keep this, this has been the problem in this county. The culture in this county has been, if we got a nickel, we spend it. And that's what you're talking about again. Oh, we're going to have a fund balance next year. Let's start digging into it and start spending it. That's what takes us backwards. We should fifteen to twenty percent is a healthy fund balance. Fifteen to twenty percent.
Yeah.
That's one point five to two million dollars.
Yeah.
And I'm going to get there three hundred thousand at a time and then. Get three hundred thousand for a fund balance and pull a hundred fifty out. That's been our problem right along. We've been pulling four, we've been pulling four. Four shovel loads out, four shovel pulls out of the hole and throwing three back in. But every year we keep going down. Let's not get into that culture that we're going to see some money and then start feeling it off. That's my soapbox.
I have a question, Tim. Going down that road again, we, this negative cash flow seems to continuously come up and it seems to divide us and. For whatever reason, we seem to continuously vote on this. And I think we all agree, I'm going to speak for all of us at the, at the time being, that this is something that needs to be resolved. Can you and Karen collaborate and come up with a plan to. Resolve this over a period of time?
We can. But I've actually been thinking about this myself and I may as well.
Go ahead.
As long as I've got the soapbox. You. Or you are elected to serve the next term and that term is going to be four years. That's brand new. In the past, it's tough when you're on a two year term to really do what I would consider to be a very. Meaningful strategic plan. What I'd like to do is. Set up a literally strategic plan meeting with the board where we go through this exercise. Now, I can do it. I've done these in the past. Obviously be a public meeting. Or, you know, we could talk about, and this is obviously not something you need to even consider a decision on tonight, but we could actually hire somebody in who's a third party who doesn't have the. And I mean this in a positive way, all the biases that we bring to the table because we're here, we're we're.
Influencing.
Into the system. There are just some things we don't see as we're in involved in that. We can talk about that later, but what I'd like to do. Is use that opportunity then to put ourselves together a good strategic plan over the four year term. You're all going to be here. So over that term, this is what our goal is to come up with X, whatever that might be. And there are any number of things that we can talk about. In that session, but this would definitely be one of them. And if that's the direction we want to go, we'll do just like we did weaning ourselves off from. Tax revolving fund. We said in four years, we're going to take that down to where we're not taking anything out. You succeeded. And you're to be commended for that for sticking to it. I know it wasn't easy. But in four years, now you're no longer depending on that fund to fund your daily operations. The same framework will work even for the cash flow situation. We know we should have at least ninety days cash available. That's a great goal to go to. What is that number? I don't know. We can figure that out, but maybe that's the goal. In four years, that's where we are. We know when our fund balance. We know what the recommendations are. After four years, let's make it a goal to get there. But four year term, I mean, it's a great opportunity and I think we can be successful. At least have a better chance of being successful than on a two year term. So that's what I'd like to do with that. And you all have to be part of that conversation. Karen and I can collaborate all day. You have to vote on it. You have to set the policy. That's what we'll follow. And we'll happily bring you all the data so that you'll have good working information to work with. But that's the conversation that you have to have. And I think that's the best avenue to do it. It won't just be a fun balanced negative cash. Exercise. This is something that we'll talk about the entire organization as a whole moving forward. And we'll involve our department heads and and others, you know, we'll talk about that later. But I think this is a great opportunity with a four year term to do that.
You and I had a conversation, I don't, three or six months ago, prior to one of the numerous times we voted on this negative cash flow. And I asked, obviously you have much more expertise in this scenario than than myself, that yes, I agree that this is not best practice. However, it has not been illegal. Is there anything wrong with coming up with a strategy for a permanent long term fix versus a quick fix?
Yeah, there's nothing wrong with that. But I'll tell you, just, you know, being negative, I. Would like to see us at least at zero, you know, to start with. But, you know, what I'd like and what you want to set as policy. You know, there's no competition. It's what you're going to set as policy that does that. But I think this will give us the opportunity. Is it realistic to say we can accomplish this in four years? Obviously, yes. I mean, that can be done over four years is that the preferred route the board wants to go. That's that's what I want to establish. And that way, well, we may not be as comfortable as we would with the so called quick fix. It at least gives us the the confidence that after a certain amount of time, we're going to be there. And the board, you've you've proven that you can do it. So it's just a matter of now saying what those parameters are and reaching for that goal.
Can you, what timeframe are you looking at as far as a conversation at the committee, the whole, to present those figures plan?
Well, it's an exercise. So this is a going to be probably a multiple meeting, probably two county meetings that we could dedicate to doing it. And it's. The 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 planning that we have to do upfront, not difficult, it's just a matter of the time. If we're going to hire somebody to come in and do it, obviously we. Issue an RFP and and get some bids in to do it. If I'm doing it, there's a lot of things that you can do. In preparation of that meeting, we like to talk about strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and. And we don't like to say threats, we like to say challenges, right? So, I mean, those are things that we don't necessarily need to do en masse. We're going to ask you to come up with what you think they are. We're going to list them, we're going to put them on the table and we're going to talk about it. But it's after that, that I think a facilitator I think would be very good for us. Again, I could do it, but I bring. Biases to the table that we really don't want. We want somebody independent that doesn't have that day to day workflow. In mind that they're going to be able to see things that we can't see.
What about the auditor? Could they give insight on that?
Maybe. I I don't know what their qualifications are. There there are. Probably Ryan Veder knows a few of them too. There are some planning firms out there that do that. There's a group out of Flint. I know the guy, I just can't think of his company off the top of my head, that that's what they do. MSU Extension does that too. If we get an MSU facilitator, it might not cost very much at all to have that done. But I'm looking at somebody that's going to put that document together for you too, and you can look at that, tweak it, vote on it. And get that done by the time we. Start the budget for twenty twenty six, I think that'd be an excellent guideline for all of us.
Go ahead, Commissioner Simmons.
So about the positive cash. I'm not, I'm I'm not against that. And and I'm the thing is trust is good and proof is better. But there, there, there is an area where. Spending is a little out of control. And that's my hesitation on all this. I understand, I like the budget. We have money over the end of this year. But if they go over and continue to go over. Then that positive cash flow will be gone again. Would I, am I incorrect? If they don't stay within budget, that negative cash flow could come up again, couldn't it?
If there is overspending, yes.
And that's what I'm afraid of. I'd love you to have that money, believe me, I would. But I've from 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 this year and from last year. You know, when I said trust is good and proof is better, I haven't seen any proof yet. That that's all I got to say. I would love for her to have that money. I'm just so afraid.
I know, it's not me. They're not giving the money to me. It's not Karen problem. It's not a county treasurer's office problem. This is a county problem. So.
I know that.
I just want to make it clear, it's not a me problem. I probably, I I think my point of all of that is, is there has been conversation, there has been a lot of thought that has went into. These numerous votes about this conversation, about this resolution is is. I I wanted to point out, I would like a plan. I I would like some films put together. As this continuously comes up and continues to seem to divide us.
Yeah, nice to be considered.
Well, you know, I, we can put down the, we have the whole, next committee of the whole, get that going and it would not take long to if. Again, I don't want to make a decision tonight, but if you decide you'd like to have a facilitator come in.
Conversation in a positive aspect, agreed. I think we all need this resolved. Just how we're going to go about doing this. General public comment. Thank the two supervisors. I don't think I, I'm, do you want to introduce yourself? Are you the Edwards Township supervisor?
I'm the Edwards Township supervisor.
Can you stand up?
I, until your board is running out of posts.
Okay.
So we're stuck for four more years.
They're, they're a good board though. They have done miraculous things.
Thank you for coming.
Very happy with everything we've gotten done in our hall and civilians and things like that. I did want to make a comment. We have five Amish families that are now in Edwards. There's going to be a total of twelve. So I've worked with the road commission. We've got signs going up. You're going to see a lot more buggies. John himself, who lives on Greenwood, has ten children. And they like to walk at our in the white clothing. So please. People ought to be aware.
Thank you.
We're already getting comments about it. So they're here to stay. They're buying every property they can find and. Pre shelter on so most of what he had and they're looking to move further out. The people we have now have come from Pennsylvania. I don't know how many more are underway, but total of twelve is what we are.
Thank you for the information. Nice to meet you. I introduce yourself.
Most of you have known me, some of you that don't. I did want to make another public comment on what you guys are talking about budget too, with the building plan. I know you can't fix a building and then run out of money and not have money to. Maintain that building, but some of those rebates that are consumers oriented are, may not be there next year. So. When you're looking into that and the building improvements that you are doing, I would take into consideration like the consumer rebates that may not be here next year. As a long term investment, especially the lighting one, me being electrician know that. Your light goes quite expensive here probably.
Yes, it is.
Is a, is a big consumer's rebate. So. When you're looking at you and some of that money and deciding what to do with some of that money, I would definitely look at the ones where you might not get that rebate next year for doing that project.
So you're saying we need to do the project this year?
I would say look at the ones that are going away. Now, they've talked for the last seven years of those going away and they haven't yet, but they have gotten reduced almost every year. So. You know, if it's a lighting project and you get the bids and you're kind of comparing them, that would. Confederation that, oh, well, that rebates here this year, it might not be here next year. Window or the door project, you know, you might build a, no rebate on that. So. Rather you do that project right away, it might not make a difference. The boilers and the lights, I know there's big rebates for.
Thank you. Thank you for the information. Thanks for coming, Bruce. Any public comment on the phone? Whole session to discuss collective bargaining unit under MCL fifteen dot two six one eight one.
I'd like to make the motion that we go in both session to discuss collective bargaining. Under MCL one five point two six eight one C.
There'll be no business after this track.
Right.
Is there support on that?
I'm surprised.
Support, Commissioner Wiltie? Roll call vote.
Frank Scott.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Roger Mayhew.
Yes.
Charles Wiltie.
Yes.
Mr. Simmons.
Yes.
Good night, everyone. Thank you.
Here's, here's this. Can you give that back as of the whole session meeting? Yes, sir.
Animal control.
Yes.
There's still millions going to that.
Yeah, in November, in in two weeks.
Is, is it unposted?
It's on the ballot.
On the ballot. Better be on the ballot.
It is on the ballot.
Has it been put out there? Do you understand what it's for?
We've educated in our townships.
I was trying for like.
Is the sheriff's office?
It says on the ballot. But I knew they were friends. Because my, my cat.
The motion to bring us back into open session.
Right. Roll call vote.
Need a result.
Yes.
Frank Simmons.
Yes.
Frank Scott.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Roger Mayhew.
Yep.
Motion to adjourn. On favor, say hi.
Bye.
Posed.
But with Skunky, he's he's out with the cats all the time.
Have a good night.
My cats don't even want to come on the pool brand anymore. They look out in the woods.
You did, you were off the story, you did or didn't get sprayed?
No, it isn't sprayed anything.
Here's another one.
And he knows when I said sign to eat, I'm going to eat.